The United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Public comment. Do we have?
There's nobody here.
Nobody here. Public comment. That's beautiful. New business requests from the police chief. We get right off the bat here. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Just wanted to keep you abreast of the situation. We had an officer resign, so we have started, well, we're looking to replace him. We were going to start the process this week, formally announcing the position. The position is within our budget, so nothing changes. And we're looking at an academy date for whoever we hire, because whoever we hire, well, we're going to do what has been requested in the past, and we're going to go on part timers first. And I believe it was you that had mentioned to me. Thought that was the better idea.
Mm-hmm.
So we are going to do that. From our three part timers, we feel pretty confident that, you know, we have some people there.
Can you speak up? I can't hear you.
Oh, closer this way.
How about just now?
Okay.
All right. So we're going to put it out internally, as we're required by the union. We're going to put it out internally to the town, as we're required. And then, when all is said and done, we're looking, whoever we hire, we expect will have to go to the full-time academy, and we're looking for that to be in the fall, after, you know, all of our summer needs are met. So just wanted to keep the Board of Selectmen aware of how we're moving along with that.
Okay. So no action need from us on that tonight, then?
Just wanted to, you know, just want to keep you abreast of what we're doing.
All right. We do have executive session. We typically do last, just because we get the other business done first, so it's kind of, I know it's a pain in the tush, but I don't want to cut out on everyone else and cut back and have people come back at an unknown time, so.
Our attorney is not going to be ready until a little bit later anyways, so.
All right. So it's up to you. You can, you know, we could shoot you a text or something when we're ready for you, or um?
Do you figure it's going to be?
Um, let's see. Really, there's not much on here for today, so we could just say this would go pretty quickly, it looks like.
Yeah, I'll just say.
This is the first time I look at the agenda, so I'm going to apologize. I'm still not getting my emails through on a regular basis. I think I'm losing my internet at home on my tablet. I checked last night, I had nothing, and I, so I'm looking at the, everything for the first time now, so I apologize for not being better prepared. Representative for Select Board, Fire Department, Union.
Yes, so the Fire Department, they have their intent to, you know, negotiate with the town a contract for the Fire Department Union, and they are interested in moving forward with that pretty soon, so the town, the Select Board needs a representative similar to how the Select Board sends a representative for the DPW and the Police Union. This is the Select Board's opportunity to appoint a representative for the Fire Department.
Well, I think default, that's going to go to Dylan, because Matt's a short timer, we may not be done by April, and I am obviously involved with the Fire Department, so I cannot do it. So Dylan, you're going to win on that one.
Yeah, that's, that's what I figured as well, so that sounds, sounds good to me.
All right. Moving right along. COVID update?
So the COVID update's not too much different this week than it has been in the past couple of weeks. We're still seeing a pretty steady number of cases every week. This past week, I think we had 12 new cases. I know that the school has seen an uptick in cases, and they're attributing that to winter break and the holidays. I know that all of the emergency personnel in town have had the opportunity now to get vaccinated, and the DPW will be in the next phase, in Phase Two, although there are a lot of DPW members who are also emergency service personnel, so.
Most, yeah.
Yeah, so they've had the opportunity, but, you know, Phase Two is really for public works, and then Phase Three will be the general public, which we hope to see in March to the beginning of April. So other than that, there's not too much to update on this.
Still looking for a regional location like Rutland. Are we thinking about trying to set something up locally for in-mission?
Uh, you know, locally has been in the discussion. We did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago about that, which I talked about last time. And so I think it's still on the table. It's really going to come down to funding, you know, how much it's going to cost, which it should be covered under PERS, or there's other federal funds that have been allocated to states for distribution of the vaccine, so if we're able to tap into that, you know, that's an option, but it's good to have a regional service, but we don't want all of the costs to come down on the Town of Barry if we're vaccinating six other towns. So really, that's going to be the biggest discussion.
My thought from regional is if we bring multiple towns into it and pick a central location, we may have more pull with the state, we may get vaccines quicker, we may get better assistance if we pool together.
Yeah.
They'd like to see regionalization in, in the police departments and our dispatching. They may appreciate the regional attempt, so if we talk to, maybe talk to some of the other select administrators in these towns, and think about a regional location, maybe in Rutland, and that, it's already been done for the first responders there, and if we try to do it for the population, we might get a bumper priority for it.
Yeah, so the state has, every community was responsible for submitting a plan. It fell on the Board of Health, but it's my understanding that they all had the responsibility of submitting a plan for vaccine distribution, and now the state is kind of vetting which plans make the most sense for getting the most vaccines out in an efficient way. So Barry is definitely on the table, and we definitely have a good location for it that everybody knows about, since we have that regional school district, everybody really knows where that is, so we'll see. I don't, they haven't made their decision yet, so we'll see where that lands.
Right, and it does cover still at least the five towns, the school district, if not surrounding people, so good chance. All right.
Do you guys have any other questions?
Thank you, Ms.
Cable access discussion. We have that under whole business. Representative Berthew didn't have all of his information ready for us yet, so he asked to come back for the February meeting, and that's why I pulled him off the agenda, to make sure we didn't have people expecting when he wouldn't be here. Matt, you did forward a letter if you wanted to take on that, what you saw about the grant for it. Possible? This is something you forwarded, I think, to Jessica, a grant, something that's come back out for.
That was regarding the census, and having a local representative participate in confirming some of the census information that we need.
I thought.
Go ahead, Jessica.
I think he's mentioning the DLCA grant, the, from CMRPC, that they sent out, where they had, it can apply to a couple of different things, like planning for growth.
My memory is not remembering this particular.
Yeah, you sent it last, oh, last Monday, you sent it.
The state approved some money, it looked like about $230,000 to the CMRPC, to look towards that, and one that you suggested Jessica look into that, is possible source of funding for some of our cable and internet issues.
Wow.
But I assumed you'd want to talk on it, but I'm sorry. No, no big deal.
No, I got you, and no, I wasn't really prepared to do much talking on this. It was, uh, there were a couple of things reading into this. I think this also had a little bit to do with what they intended for, thought they might do for South Barry. Last year, I think they proposed something where they would do like a local analysis that would help us identify if it would be available for like a, a community block grant for a neighborhood upgrade type thing, but it does seem like there's a potential where cable access could potentially, or should I say internet access, this could potentially be put into that if the application was written the right way, and we could support, support it as well as support the fact that it appears that towns in our kind of population density and total population will get kind of stuck in the middle of not being small enough, but definitely not being big enough either, so we're kind of stuck where there's a lot of funding mechanisms and, like the, what Donnie Berthew was talking about, would you call for the cable, the MBI? I think Dylan, you referenced.
Yeah, MBI, Mass Broadband Institute.
Well, the last time we were talking to Donnie, he was like, surprisingly, Barry wouldn't fit in that program, because apparently we're not as diluted, I guess, as New Green Tree, and we don't have enough population for the state to think that they need to make sure it gets covered.
What about the possibility of applying for that grant not for cable or internet, but find, what we've been trying to figure out, and we're all doing bits and pieces, and we work full-time, and Jessica's got other things to do, what if we look for a grant for a CMRPC to do the research, to find our best avenue for cable and/or internet? They could, they could possibly, if we got a grant awarded, we could hire a CMRPC to find our best option for either private running of the wires, some sort of bargaining with the cable company, fiber optic, to have someone else hook up cable complete, you know, internet by itself to that. Maybe we apply for a grant for them to study the possibilities and give us our options.
That definitely could be good, because I agree that with everything we're asking Jessica to do, that's a lot to put on her desk.
Right.
Like you said, the three of us are full-time workers, practically volunteering our time to do what we can as it is, so yeah, I could see that as being another option.
And then without dipping it into $100,000, we have on hold for the town to put towards its purpose, you know, if they only have $230,000, it looked like, towards that grant, they're not going to spend it all in one place, but perhaps we can get a chunk of that grant, and they could dedicate quite a few hours to this and probably get a lot done. You know, our, our experience with the CMRPC is they do a pretty thorough job, and they'd probably, you know, kick all the stones over, and we'd find out what we can really do. And they may have some pull with Charter that we don't, being regional planning.
Agreed, and they might be able to expand upon our opportunities, can, as I mentioned before, sometimes we have cable on the street, but people live a thousand feet from the street, so they're getting a quote from the cable company for $3,000 to hook up.
Right.
Maybe CMRPC also can advise how we might be able to build programs to help assist them.
Right. I, I agree with you. There's got to be a way to do that. They used to do it for home improvements at times and different issues, and, you know, it doesn't have to be debt that's forgiven over time, but could be paid back over many years. You know, once the money's budgeted or granted for it, it's not like it's a recurring expense in the town. It's just money that would trickle back in and wind up as free cash. Any given year, we collect money back on that. But that's the kind of things we could ask them to look into, so maybe if we ask Jessica to attempt to write to the grant for that and apply for towards that end, that might be a smarter way to pursue that money.
Maybe it's also a way to sell it to the cable company. If we're willing to help get people to sign up.
Yeah.
They might be more willing to actually upgrade or put wires on the street.
And so one of the things I asked Representative Berthew to look into for sure was if, if, for example, we decided we would run fiber down these remaining roads and tied into the town fiber, would Verizon be willing to come in and energize that fiber? If we put the town municipal buildings, the school, the library, and so many houses on, at what point are they willing to come energize that and pick up that fiber line? And I'm sure if we ever did that and picked up the fiber line, so people had that for an internet access, that's something that either the town could expand upon, or they could expand upon on their own to pick up more customers. I'm sure there's many areas of town, uptown here in South Barry, that are populous, debt, population dense enough, that they would gladly run the fiber down those little areas and pick up more customers. So he was going to look into that and see what kind of threshold there is, if they'd even consider picking it up. And, you know, we can propose the same thing to Charter. If they look at their fiber end, if we ran more cable, would they pick that up for internet? And it's, but CMRPC, these are things they could definitely delve into if we get a grant authorization for that. And I, it sounded like that's more what the grant's for, is that sort of planning and discovery than actually running wires to somebody.
I agree.
Okay. Dylan, do you have anything else to add on the cable, or we're on the topic, or?
Uh, no, I'm just thinking of the topic.
All right. Jessica, anything you want to add about that from?
Yeah, I just want to add that I have a meeting with CMRPC tomorrow about this grant, so I can get more details.
All right, and definitely if, if this is something we can write the grant towards, I'd suggest we do that sooner. It'll be a first come, first served, so the quicker we get in on that, the better.
Um, I, I know that the due date for first consideration is the 27th, so.
We could get it in. Okay, excellent. I think it's a good plan. I'm optimistic for that.
Is sometimes it also gives you a short period of time to accomplish this.
Right.
So depending on the application, it might be something that needs to be done before the end of the fiscal year.
And that's something Jessica will have to discuss with CMRPC when she meets with them, what their timing could be, but since they're holding the grant, I'm sure they, you know, they can make it fit, I would hope.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on. Minute approvals, as I said, I haven't got a chance to really go through them. I've looked at them briefly. I got probably a third of the way through the January 4th minutes. If you guys are both comfortable with them, I have no problem if you want to approve them. Otherwise, I'd put them off to the next meeting, but.
I read them both, and I'm comfortable with them, but I'll defer, I don't mind waiting either. I don't think there was anything critical that I need to get out to the public by a minute.
I didn't see anything as, as I've read through it so far, so I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned with getting stuff published with people to look through if they want, so if Dylan's comfortable, I'd say we'll go ahead and approve them.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with how I went through them, and I saw, saw the issue, so I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 4th, 2021. I second that.
Motion to second to approve the meeting minutes of January 4th, 2021. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Greg, yes. Matt, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. And then we have executive session minutes from the same day.
I'd make a motion to accept the executive session minutes for January 4th, 2021. Second that motion.
Motion to second to accept the executive session minutes for January 4th, 2021. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt, yes.
And Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Both have passed. Correspondence, letter from Caregiver Patient Connection, CPC. Dylan, how would you like to read that letter?
Briefly. Letter is dated January 11, 2021. Dear Selectmen Urban, O'Sullivan, and Clark, On behalf of our company, the Caretaker Patient Connection, Catherine and I want to present our first of all, host community payment amount in the amount of $10,000 to our town of Barry. It has been a long road getting here, and without the careful thought, consideration, foresight of the board, parentheses, and I very much include former Selectmen Chase in this. It may not have, Catherine and I would again like to thank the many residents and friends who supported the project and the idea of bringing business to Barry. They tirelessly showed up to voice that support, and they are as much a part of this payment as we are. We hope that this payment is timely in helping the town, as in that case, improve the financial burdens of the current health situation. We look forward to issuing Barry many more of these over the coming years with our sincere thanks and me and I ability and Catherine's.
Excellent. So that's our first host agreement payment, and this was on, by all counts, a partial grow in them for this year, so that, that check could actually grow in future years. And we, you know, we'll have to decide where that money will be spent. As I suggested, you know, the equipment such as the ambulance, we have to get four-wheel driving things to get to these facilities. I think that's a wise way to apply the payments, as it's money we wouldn't have to spend out of the coffers otherwise, and it most assuredly shouldn't be questioned by the state if and when they do challenge how the host money is spent, so I would listen to your thoughts on that, guys.
I have nothing else to add. I agree with what you said, Greg, that's a good way to spend the money, and it's a fantastic start. I'm very enthusiastic about these cannabis operations in town.
Yeah, I have nothing more to add. I think, as we've discussed, we've already got things lined up on the capital plan, and we've already agreed to spend and plan to spend in the future that this can apply to that fits the criteria we've been talking about.
Yeah, I do know Chief O'Gowsky did say there's different meters he needs specifically, because he's a CO2-rich environment, he needs some specific CO. We have CO meters that we use in fires, but CO2, although it's not a leaf of gas, when it, when it overcomes the air, you're not breathing enough oxygen, so he needed specific meters for testing for CO2 levels and test equipment, at least one test machine, to periodically test those meters to zero them and check them again, so there's definitely equipment that he wanted to be able to purchase, which thus far he hasn't been able to. And that's certainly a way we can apply that money, maybe at annual town meeting, you know, before the fiscal year's up, we could put payments towards that specifically and figure out with the Finance Committee where the rest will be applied, but we definitely get those need-to-purchase items off the list first, and then we can start putting money towards the vehicles we need to buy to get there.
Yeah, I, I think it's more of an internal accounting, not a before-town meeting, because I think the way this works is that all that money comes into the general fund, and it's just revenue. We just need to internally identify when that revenue comes in, where did we move it to help cover costs that are approved by town meeting. So I'm not saying I'm against you telling the town what the expectation is on how to use that, so that they're informed. I just don't think that.
It's necessary.
There's any requirement where the town will approve where that money's spent.
Um, I would hope that is the way. It'd be a lot easier to spend, but the formality of bringing it up at a town meeting so that people understand that there is money coming in from this now, there's something in, in it for the town from these facilities, and to see where that money goes, and understand that it really is taking away from something that we'd be spending out of the coffers. I like to go through for that reasons. If we don't have to, you know, we could certainly spend it in the future in other ways, but I think it's nice to let the town see where it gets spent. It is still money that comes in that is the town's money, and I always like them to get a chance to see exactly where it goes back out in the books and where it's spent. That's the reason I suggested.
And I agree with the idea, given them a moment to make sure they understand.
Right.
Where that money came from and where we spent it.
And we just need to do it before the end of fiscal year, so as long as we have our annual town meeting this year in a timely manner, that shouldn't be a problem to, you know, go through the, the meeting, the process, and let people see where the money goes and how that's going to work. But thank you, Dean. I appreciate, and Catherine, we appreciate the check, and let's, let's hope business goes well for them.
Agreed. Thank you very much.
East Quabbin.
I'll be happy to answer the letter. I appreciate the, the sentiment.
Yes. East Quabbin Land Trust has written us as well. Or that was, wait a minute. CPC. Am I mixing two different things? Nope. East Quabbin Land Trust, different one. There we go. Dylan, when you want, you have that one, want to read that one as well?
Yeah, sir, sure. This letter's from East Quabbin Land Trust, dated December 31st, 2020. Dear Mr. Urban, Mr. Clark, and Mr. O'Sullivan, On behalf of the Board of Directors, please find, enclose a contribution of $100 to the Town of Barry in appreciation of the town's commitment to open space conservation. This has been a difficult year, and reports of dedicated open space is clearly evident as we struggle to limit the spread of the coronavirus by being apart. Being outdoors is one of the few relatively safe activities available to all. This fall, we began building a trail at our Prince River Preserve, or Flaherty Road, to provide a single-track hiking trail to access the old reservoir for passive recreational visitors. The East Quabbin Land Trust also looks forward to partnering with the town of Flaherty with desirable implementation of this old vulnerability, preparedness plan, and meeting open space and recreation plan goals. The East Quabbin Land Trust looks forward to continuing a positive working relationship with the Town of Barry in 2021. Sincerely, Cynthia Henshaw, Executive Director.
And that's unusual. Usually it's we who contribute to those trail funds, to the roads for the, like the rail trail and things, so it's, it's nice to see them donate some money back, and I'm sure in the long run, it'll be just used back towards trails and things for, for the town. I don't know if you guys have any comments you want to make on that?
I agree. I appreciate the contribution of the $100. Even at a minimum, it helps offset our, what we've been doing lately, is that annual $1,000 towards the Watcher's Greenway rail trail. This just helps us continue to invest in our local conservation efforts and recreation.
And as I've, I've talked to Jason Pimento a little bit, and I do believe he plans to go down our road, that gate, that property in question has been removed by the town, so they can continue to plow through that road, and they do plan to make a turnaround in the end, so, you know, obviously, so apparatus for fire trucks, ambulance, will have the ability to get out to the end if people are on those trails and turn around, which will also aid that land trust in, in building their parking area and getting access for people to the reservoir. So the town will have some participation in that, and some, you know, effort towards the, the trails as well, so we do give back to them.
They actually just recently hiked the trail that they just parked out up there. It's a pretty nice trail, and it's, it's not too hard on people that aren't used to hiking, so it's a pretty good trail.
And the ground's pretty level out there, I believe. I haven't gone up that end of the, but it's probably, what, a half a mile or so to the reservoir from the trail there?
Yeah, not bad. Not bad at all, and they did a nice job. It's kind of a winding trail, so you don't feel like you do the trail so quick. I know for me, it's like, I like to take a trail that takes me more than 15 minutes to get to the end.
Right.
And so this is a nice kind of winding trail that's not too hard, so they do a good job. They did a nice job coming that through and kind of showing you the direction, so it can help people figure it out when it snows.
Yep, excellent. Dylan, anything you want to add?
Nothing, nothing in particular, but I like the sentiment. It's very, he scratched your back and scratched ours, and I appreciate the contribution from the UDOT, and I look forward to getting over to the trail sometime soon.
All right. And our last correspondence, US Census Bureau, Boundary and Exation Survey, BAS. And I see Matt forwarded this to Jessica. Who wants to talk on that? Tell me what's going on with this.
I'll, I'll say something about this.
All right.
So, yes, Matt was approached, I believe, by the US Census Bureau, because he was identified by them as the head executive officer, and basically what they sent was just this survey that has to be done, I think it's yearly, or, yeah, it says every year that the US Census Bureau does this survey, not every town or geographic center is included every year, but this year Barry was included, and it's really just something that I can work on with the assessor's office, because it's just making sure that the federal government has the correct boundaries of the town, you know, as far as our, where we meet the Town of Harwick, and New Green Tree, and Hubbardston, and just making sure that what they have on file is actually correct. So it's pretty simple.
So we, I assume we've had no changes in our boundaries, so we should have nothing to report, but who verifies those in town?
Right, so I, I will work with the assessor's office, and it's not so much that they're looking for towns or communities that have expanded their boundaries, I think it's more so just making sure that what they have on file is actually correct.
All right.
Yeah, so I think we've gotten from Rutland a few times, they've talked about doing their, what they call examination for elevation, and they'll send us the results of their survey of their boundaries, but that really only affects one border of Barry, so I don't think we've done it for a while, but it allows us to kind of verify that if they went and did a survey, and for some reason, all of a sudden, the numbers change, we call it out to try to make sure that somebody didn't rewrite our boundary.
All right.
Obviously, I don't think anybody would do it intentionally, but for some reason, none of us paid attention to the survey, and the last survey, and the survey before that. We may not realize if somebody just made a mistake. We may not realize if somebody just made a mistake and now all of a sudden it looks like somebody's crossed the line by 15 feet somewhere that we didn't realize.
All right. Sounds like a, a good job for the assessor's office. All right. That's about it on the news stuff, gentlemen, selectmen reports, if you have any.
If you'd love to, my, I'll just take a quick moment.
Yep.
I can get it via Facebook, but I just wanted to take a moment just verbally to tell people that, um, I intend for this to be my, my last term for the foreseeable future on the board's selectmen. So my term expires in April. I don't plan to rerun for the board's selectmen this time around. Um, it's been a privilege and an honor and, um, I can't say enough about the people that have supported me. And all the people that voted me in both times I ran. I also don't want it to sound like I'm alienating those that didn't vote for me. I appreciate it even when people don't agree with me if they're willing to come and tell me that. So I actually know what's going on in town. Thank you for my best to represent the town's whole. Um, so I think I was pretty blessed with the response I got from pretty much everybody in town regarding, um, our role as a selectman. And I just wanted to say thank you. I think, uh, people treated me very well and respectfully. And I probably couldn't have asked more on that role. And if I do plan on running for the planning board, I think it'll be a little bit less commitment of my personal time, which is part of the reason I chose to back out of the board's selectmen this time around. So that's where, um, that's my current role. And I just wanted to kind of get it out there also very meaning so that it's verbally on video, people can see me saying and not get lost in just wondering what purpose you're saying.
All right. Well, thank you, Matt. You know, obviously I appreciate your, your service on the board. And we've, uh, I think together, you know, seeing opposing sides often and things, I think it's been very helpful in, in the path we've taken with the board and the things we've done. And I'm going to miss that. Um, you know, sometimes we agree on things and sometimes we don't. And that, I think that's, that's where our, our best decisions come from is when there is opposition and we discuss things, um, completely. So, um, you know, wish you a lot.
And I, I was a little remiss. I should. In fact, I, I want to specifically call out Greg and Dylan and Charlie Chase before. I've worked with some very good other members of the board's selectmen and I appreciate the fact that we've been able to, uh, have sometimes that diverse discussion and be able to continue to talk and keep working through and find common ground. And, and like you said, we can agree to disagree, but I've never taken it personally either way and I don't feel like others have either. So thank you for being that type of person, each of you, uh, for allowing that type of conversation and discussion. And it makes the whole, it makes all the difference in the world for the town.
It does.
For the board's selectmen, be able to have that type of conversation.
Absolutely. Dylan, if you have anything, I'll let you add it. Otherwise, we could start your, uh, report if you have one.
Well, I'll just say that I truly appreciate everything that Selectman Urban has done for the town. And I, I've, uh, really appreciated his, uh, his, his leadership and his ideas the entire time I've been on the board and before I was on the board. And I've learned a lot from you, Matt. And I look forward to working together in various capacities for a, a long time. So thank you very much. That, that is my, uh, selectman report this week.
All right.
Thank you, Dylan.
We still got you for five more weeks, so no lame duck selectman stuff.
I agree with that. I completely agree with that.
Let's keep hitting it and getting some stuff done here. Let's, let's get somewhere on this cable before you get out and so we can stick that feather in the cap. We have been pushing for that for years and I don't want to give up on it. All right, um, I have nothing specific other than I've had more conversations, I said, with Representative Berthew about the cable. I've talked to other people about it and other towns I've heard. They, they have run it privately, but towns that have done that, I've heard of own their own poles. So once again, it'd be a matter of looking into finding a couple of companies. And once you get a CMR PC, you can do it. We don't have to. But I, I think it's a very viable avenue to try to find a company to run the cable for us. Um, probably much more economically than paying Charter to do it. Um, but we need to know once again if, if Verizon or Charter or someone will pick up those cables we run and energize them. I can't imagine they would not. The, if you, if you tease the numbers out a little bit to use Dylan's phrase, if you picked up 200 new customers on those lines at $70 a month, that's, that's pretty substantial. $14,000 a month, you get close to $150,000 a year worth of extra service they can pick up if we run the cables. So I can't imagine that doesn't, um, entice someone to pick up internet for them. So I'm very optimistic and I think, I think we can get there. We just got to really push these next couple of months. I'd love to come to town meeting with some proposal that we can move on. Um, if, if we haven't already on our end with, with the money we have approved. Jessica, administrative report, please.
Um, so first thing on my report, I wanted to mention, um, as I did earlier, that for the DLCA grant that I do have a meeting with CMR PC tomorrow where I'll be able to flush out some ideas with them and get a feeling on what, um, you know, feasibility of these ideas that you guys have brought to me are. And, you know, I can get back to you guys with some more details after, after I have that conversation. And I do intend on applying as early as possible to make sure that we get in for that first round of funding. Um, we probably would have the best opportunity for funding the earlier that we submit the grant. This past two days, um, yesterday, or actually, no, yesterday was a holiday. So today and Thursday, I, uh, conducted the interviews for the Assistant Treasure Collector. Um, those are complete. We had seven applicants. Um, they were all wonderful applicants that, um, I've had the pleasure of interviewing. Um, all really good candidates. So Alex and I are going to have discussions over the next couple of days on how we want to progress, if we want to narrow it down and do second interviews, which is looking like will be our, uh, will be the likely decision that we make. Um, and then hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll definitely have a decision and a wage authorization to present to the board at the February meeting. Um, and hopefully the new employee can start shortly thereafter.
Has Alex been involved in interviews with you?
Yes, he's done every single one with me.
Excellent. Thank you.
I really let him kind of run the interviews on because he knows more of the content base, you know, the day-to-day work that this individual would be doing. Um, and then, you know, my part in it has been trying to get a feel for their overall, you know, how they would fit in our town hall, how they would fit in the community. So it's been a really good progress, uh, process so far. On Thursday, I have a webinar for, um, the MVP Action Grant. So I just wanted to let the board know that those action grants are going to be coming up soon. Um, and I plan to take full advantage of, you know, what we can do with those. I think that the MVP grants are really helpful to communities and there's a lot of opportunities that we can take with them. So, um, you know, this is just the start of it. And over the next couple of weeks, I'm going to be flushing out some more ideas on what, you know, is the best option for us this round. To piggyback off of what Matt has already talked about, the local elections are going to be held on April 5th. And anybody who's interested in running for one of the open seats can get their papers from nomination papers from Ellen, the town clerk. There's a list of positions that are going to be up for election on the town's website. So if you go on the town's website, it's under the elections tab. And there's more information there on how to register to vote for this election. Um, you know, and if you have any other questions, how to get in contact with the town clerk.
Let me ask you there, are we making appointments so people can come pick applications up in hand? Or they're going to have to be making contact and mail to them?
Uh, appointments to pick them up in hand are the preferred. Last Wednesday, I had the pleasure of, um, going to the police department's Citizens Police Academy. Uh, Chief Carbone and I made a presentation together on the administrative side of the police department and how my office interacts with that. I thought it was really, really great opportunity to interact with the community. And the people who are there seem really interested in, you know, everything that this program has to offer. So I hope that the chief continues to do that for many years to come. And my final piece of information that I want to share is that I have been a part of the Greater Gardner Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee. They appointed, um, several town administrators from the area to be a part of this economic development committee because, um, they wanted, they wanted to, to research different ways to get involved in the community and, and try and promote economic development. And the president of, um, the chamber reached out to all, you know, a lot of the area town administrators. And she's like, what better resource than the people who are in this town's day-to-day and trying to develop, you know, some economic growth in their, in their own town? So I think it's been great. Today I had my second meeting with them and, you know, I think it's just going to be a great resource for me. Um, there's a lot of great seasoned professionals on there like Mayor, former Mayor Hock of Gardner, who's now a town administrator in, I believe Westminster. Um, and Sean Tupolsky, who's a town administrator in Appal, who also has some really great experience in economic development. So I'm looking forward to using him as a resource as I try and navigate, um, you know, trying to come back from COVID here in Barry.
On that lines, I would ask, have you, um, started any framework or thought on a master plan for the town yet? Or talked with, um, the planning board at that at all? Just curious.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I have reached out to the planning board. I've, uh, talked to their chairman about the master plan. And, um, I think one of our options, which I want to explore a little bit more and talk with our, um, one of our representatives for the master, or no, for the MVP Action Grant, is that I know, um, so for example, in Palmer, the, the master plan has been done through MVP Action Grant. And, you know, a very significant amount of money has gone, you know, from that grant into a master plan. And you can do master plans cheap or you can do them expensive. And it really depends on what you want to see in that outcome. Do you want to see it take five or six years and do it in-house? Or do you want to see it done by a consulting firm that does this professionally? Um, and see it done in a year? So I think, you know, that's one of the options I want to explore for the MVP Action Grant is seeing if we can apply, if it's a, a good idea for us to apply for that use. Because I think it would be a really good use of funds, um, in Palmer. I've been a part of that master plan experience. And I think that the consultant that they've used has been phenomenal and has really made the experience enjoyable, interactive. And then they've been very thorough with it. So I think that would be a good option for us, too.
And I, I think it's important that people understand which, when this plan is finally developed, we have a, an actionable, actual, you know, master plan that we can, um, start looking towards for development, for business, for growth and everything else. I think it's important that we make sure as, as a town that with a minimum of either two or three years, we revisit and amend and, and try to constantly make this a living document. I don't think every, maybe every year. But I'd like to see maybe every two or three years, we make sure we have a good look at it and, and maybe do some tweaking so we never get too out of touch with, with where it is and where we're going. Almost like a capital, you know, capital purchase, capital spending plan. I, I think it's important. And, and Matt, what do you think, especially as you move towards planning board side, if you do? That's got to be even a stronger role in that.
I think, I, I agree with you. It's all too easy for someone to say, all right, we went through all the processes, we got a master plan, and then it just kind of dies on the shelf. I mean, for the first few years, people probably looked to and tried to use it as what it should be, the guide on how we build our policies and how we look at different zoning and how we put different bylaws so that we're all working in the same direction. But I agree that if you don't kind of revisit it every few years, pay attention to how even just Mass General Law changes and how does that affect us? And then it, it can, yeah, it can get real stale pretty quick if you don't keep on top of it like you suggest.
The, and a chance to assess how, how well it's doing too, if it's, if it's workable, if there's parts that don't work, you know, to assess the plan, its functionality and, and how well we're sticking to it or biding by it. You know, it's really more of a guidance than anything. It's like a beacon that we want to look towards and head that direction. And if, if it's just unobtainable, we need to make adjustments. And, but good, I just want to touch on that. People, have people hopefully have an understanding of what the idea of the plan is and, and, um, and how it's going to help guide the town in the future. And it's going to stay adjusted and alive after this. Kind of brings us to the modern age. We can't, we can't progress beyond where we are if we don't have this plan to, to thoughtfully map out what we're going to do. So, Jessica, anything else now that I've interrupted you again?
No, that's it.
All right. All right. That brings the end of our, um, agenda items for public. We would be looking for a motion to go to executive session. If anybody wants to make said motion, then we would, um, return from that just to adjourn.
Make the motion. Um, let me just, can I make a motion that we enter executive session under Mass General Law 38, Section 21A to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, um, more specifically regarding our union negotiations. Upon completion of that executive session, we will return to open session. Just adjourn open session. No further business. Second that motion.
I have a motion to second to move to executive session. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. Roll call, please, gentlemen. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes.